If everyone will stand please. Commissioner Prudential, if you would do the indication?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I follow God, thank thee for this day. We thank thee for these colleagues that attend to business for Gates County. We thank you for leading us in such a way that we will follow you and Jesus. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with which this stands. One nation, under God, in the best of will be the justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Gates County Commissioners for July 16th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. There is no minutes to approve because this is the second meeting of the month. You have before you a agenda, a couple of adjustments, under nights' allegations, and Gates Partners for Health. They inadvertently left off. And under New Business, we're going to change number eight, the portment of sure, and move it up as first item under New Business. And that we are also going to go a closed session for that at that time. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So moved, second.
Motion's been made in part of the second. All those in favor say aye. The agenda is approved as adjusted. Okay. I believe Ms. Valerie Rude is up already. She, and you find in front of you her report, written report, and also some information about your partners for health. We look forward to your visit every year. I hope you tell us where you're doing good health.
Glad to see you're doing well.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is the President, honored to be here this afternoon. As you may have, may have known, may not know, I've been out generally with everyone watching the hospital, and I'm on the wait list for a heart transplant. So please keep me in your prayers. I'm still continuing to try to do as much as I can do right now. But you have your report in front of you, and that's why I do apologize for not having a mid-year report because I was not there.
We had most of them.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to read everything, so pretty much it's in detail of the yearly events that have taken place since July of 2017 up through June of 2018. And we've been very busy. I tried to attend as many activities as possible with my schedule and other committee members. So Gates Partners for Health Board meets quarterly, which is the last Wednesday of each month at 10 o'clock at the Gates County Department of Social Service. Under this particular board, we do serve on the Agent and Adult Service Task Force, PITCH, with Healthy Foods and Tobacco-Free Coalition, Gates County Commissioners, Chronic Disease Prevention and Management Council, Behavior Health Committee, Alamo, Alamo Overdose Prevention Coalition, Heal Thy Neighbor Advisory Board, Open and Substance Abuse Community Action Partners, and then also the 2019 Community Health Assessment Leadership Team. So as you can see, kind of busy throughout the year with the 10 different meetings and trying to give the information out to the citizens of Gates County. Gates Partners for Health Chronic Disease, we pretty much cover community events dealing with cancer support, diabetes support, and also we support the Alzheimer's and dementia care support, which is over in Hurt County. We currently do not have an Alzheimer's and dementia care support group here in Gates County, but we're all looking to try to bring that back. And also support the Warriors of Hope Addiction and Recovery Support Group. Some of our events that either I've attended or my committee members have attended, yearly the VFW visit from the Hampton VA Hospital, they bring over their patients, they have a luncheon, the Heal Thy Neighbor Luncheon at Badawon Chawan Hospital, the Eastern Region Substance Abuse Prevention Summit in Ringel, the Open and Melt Awareness for Public Workers' Training, Badawon, 2017 Badawon Health Pink Power Luncheon, and also Badawon Help Heart Luncheon. We participated in that. The World Elder Abuse Awareness Wall, Save Our Sisters Luncheon, and as you see, there are some other things also that's listed. Under Behavior Health Committee, that meets the second Wednesday of every month as needed, and of course, our Behavior Health Services, our resources provided by Trillion Health Resources, R.I. International, and Alamo Regional Health Services, Behavior Health and Adult Services. Again, the Behavior Health Committee supports the following committees, which is the Agent and Adult Service Task Force, Alamo Commission, Area Agency, Annual Alamo Senior Games, Alamo Overdose Prevention Coalition, National Medication Take-Back Day, County Open Prevention Forum, and the Open and Substance Abuse Coalition Forum. Partners to Improve Community Health with this PITCH, that covers the healthy foods and the tobacco-free living. And as I've said before, we provide smoke-free signs for government builders here in the county, and we do support the schools with Red Ribbon Week. The ENE, ENE NC Healthy Living, that deals with obesity, diabetes, partnerships and stroke prevention. And this particular grant that was funded provides services for the diabetes program, prevention program, and we're looking for citizens to take part of this particular program. It is a year commitment, but you only meet once for the first few months, and then it's spread it out throughout the year. And that is appropriate for prevention of diabetes if you have it in the AC range, AIC range, ACI range. The 2017-19 County Health Action Plan was submitted, and our priorities are chronic disease prevention and management, which covers obesity, cancer, heart disease, diabetes, and smoking, behavior health and substance abuse, which covers mental health and Alzheimer's, and the access to care. So we have submitted our action plan. Also, we just completed last month the online survey for the Community Health Assessment, and this month we're focusing on small focus groups, meeting with citizens in the county to get feedback on health-related issues for Gates County. So you should be carrying something back from that information, the first part of 2019. And of course, the other two pages are just a list of breakdown of the meetings that I have ten, or some of committee members may attend, either on the month, bi-monthly, or every quarter. And then I've listed some of the special events that we have attended, so you have the list there, so I won't go through and read all of that. If you turn to your next section is the State of the County Health Report. That's the colored printed copy. The 2017 State of the County Health Report was reviewed and health indicators pertaining to residents of Gates County. And the purpose of this report is to track priority issues identified in the 2016 Community Health Assessment, highlight new initiatives and emerging issues, as well as to inform the community and stakeholders about the health status of the residents. And if you turn to page two, when we talk about the population for Gates County, and you can see our population is 11,478, and the senior population is our aging population, and that's where we see that most of the area for, is our senior population, which is from age going, the middle is 50 to 59, and then the senior is the 60 to 85 plus. And the aging the sex person, 65 years old is 18.5 percent. The health persons with disability under age 65 is 13.1 percent for the county. And the health for persons without health insurance under age 65 is 11.1 percent. And you can see the resources of where that data was collected. The leading cause of death in North Carolina for Gates County is heart disease, cancer, chronic lower respiratory disease. And so this is where you see how we develop our, from our community action plans of the areas that we're going to focus on for this year. And the other section just tells you about the leading cause of death, the heart disease cancer, and the numbers per, from 2012 to 16, the county rate, and then also the state rate. So you can see the comparison of where, like on the heart disease, we're higher than the state rate of cases for heart disease, and then also a little bit lower for cancer. And then so is the projection of the new cancer cases and deaths by the county, which is Gates County, and you show this listed, the ones that's dealing with lung and bronchitis, female breast, and prostate and colon. So that's the, some new cases of death. On the next page, the health ranking. The county health ranking measures the health of newly every county in the nation, published online at thecountyhealthranking.org. And as you can see, the color coordination, the blue map displays North Carolina's summer ranking of the health factors based on the weighted score for health, behavior, clinical care, social and economic factors, and the physical environment. So that's on the left where you see 2017, then you see the 2016, 2015. So as you can see, the health factor ranking for Gates County, 2015 was 66, 2016 45, and 2017 44. And then the outcome is the green map, it shows that the distribution of North Carolina's health outcomes based on the equal weight of the length and quality of life. And of course, 2015 was 39, 2016 was 26, and 2017 was 27. And your page five, on the highlights, the 2016 area focus, that is our access to care, chronic disease prevention, and behavior health and substance abuse. And this pretty much just identifies the programs that are underneath each area. Access to Care, we talked about Badawon Health Pink Power Luncheon, St. Andrews Missionary Health Fair, Numerous Swamp Health Fair, Meopon Day. There are some activities that deal with access to care. And our Chronic Disease Prevention with our cancer support, and our diabetes support that meets monthly. And then our Behavior Health Partners, where we're partnering with Alamo Overdose Prevention Coalition to host drug uncovers what parents need to know, partner with the Sheriff's Department to host two medication take-back events in 2017, participated in the Gates County, the electoral official open prevention forum in November, and then the Open and Substance Abuse Community Action Partners continue to serve on that committee along providing support to Red Ribbon and Gates County school systems. And also our resources with support from Trillion Health Resources. And our last page is found, we're kind of involved, Gates Partners for Health have developed stronger partnerships with area agencies, hospitals, churches, organizations, and community partnerships to design and plan interventions specifically targeting to identifying health disparities in the Community Health Improvement Plan for 2017 to 2019. And here I list some of the partners that I will work with, or I've worked with, is Alamo Regional Health Services, PITCH, of course, Trillion Health Resources, Badawon Chawan Hospital, Badawon Chawan Hospital, Merchant Meopon, and Alamo Commission of Aging. The last two sections are very important when it comes to the emergent issues, is lack of fresh fruit and vegetables at the only local grocery store in Gates County. So we know that is a main issue, that we're not able to be able to find fresh fruits and vegetables. Limited access to weekly farmer's market for fresh fruits and vegetables. Transportation to non-medical appointments for senior population. Healthcare problems associated with patients accessing non-emergency healthcare. Zimut patients who start going to their medical facility versus going to emergency room for non-medical care. Increase in Gates Partners for Health Committee members and Gates Partners for Health sponsor events. Lack of affordable and subsidized housing for seniors and younger adults with school age children. Lack of community programs for youth at the community center that do not require a fee, and lack of dental health services. New initiative upcoming, Gates Partners for Health will be the host for the Advanced Care Planning Luncheon, sponsor opening and substance abuse prevention community forums, work with local churches to become involved in the Heal Thy Neighbor Advisory Council, establish an Alzheimer's and dementia caregiver support group, provide support to the Warriors of Hope Addiction and Recovery Support Group, increase community engagements to enhance access to healthcare resources, implement diabetes prevention program, develop a county health resource guide, provide incentives for using the farmer's market, research, pop-up market programs, and search and seek, excuse me, community vendors to participate when the market is open. And then lastly, establish special dates at the farmer's market for transportation with Gates, with GITS, to be able to provide transportation for our citizens. So this is my report. I do thank you very much for continuing supporting Gates Partners for Health in your budget year. It pretty much goes to part of my salary, so with the money that I get from the county and Badawon Chawan Community Benefits Plan, it's about $10,000 for the year, which normally I don't go over $10,000 or it's less than $10,000. So I thank you very much for your support. You have any questions?
Well, I'd like to see that some of these trends are heading in the right direction by the health factors and health icon that we are hitting better on those. So that's important, but then of course we have areas still too high in numbers in some of the areas. Do you get, do you have any grants from the OTC Foundation in this town?
There is one that's on the table now that we're getting ready to apply for, and that is dealing with behavioral health.
Behavior.
Right. We're looking to apply for that and maybe use that as a resource at the Health Department that could be a telehealth with behavioral health.
Okay. I just attended a meeting for OTC, and I was wondering...
Yes, sir.
Your report is always there.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I appreciate everything that you do for Gates Partners for Health.
Right. We appreciate your efforts as well.
And if we hear of anything, we'll let you know that can help your cause.
Okay. Thank you.
And certainly we are, we'll be with you in thoughts and prayers as you, and hope that you can get to heart.
And I know we all go through our trials of tribulation. Just like I said, it makes you stronger, so you don't never know the next person next to you, but I'm sorry, I didn't mean this is not the time to do it. But I just want to say I have a new, a new book of life where I don't have things bothering me or worrying me. So what I can do day by day, I take it.
That's what the...
Right. I'll have to go to the other end.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, do I have a motion? Okay. There are no unannounced, so there is no old business. We had decided to have closed session because our attorney is here for a, I think it'll be a short closed session to deal with, closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, allowing legal and personnel matters. Do I have a motion?
So moved to both sections. I'll second the motion, move, Chairman.
A motion's been made, and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We will go, we want to leave for a few minutes to discuss one issue. We're going back to the jury room. We will be aye, I think, pretty shortly. Please. Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved, second, second.
A motion's been made in part of the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. At this time, I believe that we have a motion to come forth.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion pertaining to our closed session meeting. I'd like to make a motion that Robert Jordan be appointed to serve as sheriff of Gates County for an unexpired term of 2018.
Okay. A motion has been made to appoint Robert Jordan as interim sheriff for the meaning of the term, of the sheriff's term.
Madam Chairman, as sheriff.
As sheriff. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made, in part of the second. End of discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. It passes 5 to 0. Okay. Now we'll go up to the appointment of an interim finance officer. The finance officer has, is, the finance officer is, that position is vacant, and at this time, we will need a motion to appoint an interim. So then me in the past, I'm already the deputy finance officer. To give or make our interim until we can find and hire one.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we make county manager and having ground tree, the interim finance officer until that position is filled.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made, second, to appoint Natalie Raintry as interim finance officer until we have a finance officer. End of discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That is also approved 5 to 0. Mr. Felton is not...
No. Mr. Felton had a previous engagement at 6 o'clock, and I told him it might be 7:30, 7:45, so that he should be here.
We're just going. The next item of business, request to waive the fees for Habitat for the Managed System. We do not have anything in our packet.
No, I did not receive anything, but Commissioner Jordan has been in contact with Habitat.
I received a call from the Habitat for the Humanity Agency, or whatever representative, and as we know, they are a, they put up homes for eligible people who qualify in this county. The homes are built by Habitat Humanity. There is some cost, but it's no interest. It's basically an opportunity for someone in need of a home. And one of the things that, since they are a charitable organization, they've asked that if they please just waive for permit, and one of the permits would be for inspection. And I don't, I think we've already waived the, we already rezoned that area so that you could put a home there. That happened, I don't know if a year or two ago, a year and a half ago, but it's on, it's in Roduka. I don't know if that name of the recipient has...
I do, but it's not been made public from what I understand, but it was not rezoned, but what is being put there fits the zone from what I understand.
Well, I know it came to us one time.
Right.
Now, is there property there currently that can be removed?
No. No. The site's already, they, they started doing some work already.
And when you say fees, you're talking about electrical plumbing, especially all fees?
Yes. Plus six fees, yeah. Since they are a charitable organization, they're doing this, has invented for the county, county residents, and they've asked what they weigh. I was thinking that in the past, we have authorized waived fees for non-charitable, charitable organizations doing work on homes in the county. I have not found what happens written, but anyway, I think it would be a good gesture to go ahead and waive those fees, or take a price.
Okay. And would Habitat for Humanity, the person who's obtained and has the funds and work equity, again, Julie, they have to work for...
Do we know, I was just out of curiosity, do we know if the permit is drawn in the name of the recipient, or is it in the name of the Habitat?
It has, it says contract, I think, I think it's going to get, forget, isn't it?
They've known from what I understand, yeah, but it's in contract.
They'll wait. I told them we would make a decision tonight, and they're waiting on that.
I'm sure it is done. Well, Madam Chairman, if you're looking for comments on the matter, I concur with what I've heard from Commissioner Jordan on the matter.
It is.
Okay. If we all entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we waive the fees for construction of the Habitat for Humanity home in Roduka. Answer question.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay. A motion has been made in part of the second. End of discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. That is approved 5 to 0. Okay. We have a couple amendments that we'll get to there at the back of our packet. Currently, amendment two, would you like to read it? Yes. I was going to say, I can't remember what it's called.
Both of these amendments are to pull forward money for projects that were not completed as of June 30th. The amendment two is to pull the money from fund balance to pay for the courthouse roof project that was actually completed and signed up on July the 10th.
Is this our final favor? Or five thousand pounds? I mean...
It will pay, yes. We still have some bills, based on what I've seen, it's not, we did not need all of this, but just in case one shows up, I want to make sure we pulled all the money forward because it was a $275,000 project. And then three is to pull funds from fund balance to complete the conversion projects for finance, customer service, and tax. We did not finish everything in fiscal year 18 as we had anticipated, so we're requesting to move $54,043 forward into that account.
And that's for Edmonds?
That's for Edmonds and Badawon.
And the roof project as of today is?
It is, it is completed. It was completed last Tuesday. The engineer and the construction company representative was here, and we had, since I was enrolled in the LGC, two of our staff members walked through the building, walked under the roof with them, inspected it with them, talked with them, and they were satisfied with everything because one of them was our building inspector and another, well, there were two others who will be responsible for maintaining the, and the roof and the interior of the building.
And everything passed, and everything was...
Like I said, everything was accepted.
Okay. Okay. Can we do both of these at the same time?
That's fine with me.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for, concerning amendment number two, budget amendment two, and budget amendment three.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made in part of the second. End of discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Both of those pass. Okay. I perceive that Mr. Felton is here for the school board. Thank you for coming tonight. I'm sure you're wanting to, are pleased that we finally got the sign up for the money for the central and ready to start work.
I'm not pleased, I'm thrilled.
Okay. Okay. Oh, will you come to the podium?
Thank you for giving me ten...
Thank you, we, we even made a ten, oh, I'm, I'm pulling up a message from Dr. Williams so that I'll make sure I don't believe it's anything, oh. The first thing is, it, it, uh, you know, we got two and a half million dollars for the, for the central middle school. And when we got it, we were told that we could not even apply for five years. That, that Dr. Williams has spent, been in some time in Raleigh and apparently he feels like that he can apply and stand a good chance of getting another two and a half million dollars. In the same terms as the other one, but when you're trading a quarter for a dollar, it seems like a pretty good deal. So, we, we need your permission to, for him to make that happen. If, if you approve it, he, he would like to, he has written up sometime today, since I talked to him last, whatever needs to go to Raleigh, maybe, uh, Ms. Hoplin may design that and he presented that in Raleigh tomorrow, uh, for approval. And, and it doesn't guarantee that money, that that's the first request. The second request is that, uh, I pre- preface it with a little information, at, at Central, the, the teachers and, and students and some parents have complained that it's, it really cranked it up with the arrangement they have with, uh, a lot of the students being in trailers and they're, they're not able to separate the students as much as they need to to carry on good learning, and I think teachers and administrators have asked that we expand the space. And this came to me sometime last week and, and I called Ms. Raintry and she said, well, you might have to bring it before the board. So, uh, Mr. Green has investigated this and feels like total cost of buying two used trailers from Hurford Canyon, having lame rail over the, getting piled on them and walkways and such as that would be thirty-two thousand dollars. Mr. Green felt like that it was something that he had to get started on if he was going to have it ready for the start of school. So I took it on myself, and I want, I want that to be plain, if you want to point a finger at somebody and say, why? He's standing in front of it. I took it on myself to tell him to go ahead with the project and if the commissioners did not approve it, we would just have to take it out of our fund balance. Because I, I'm just like y'all, I'm not one that operates on, on, uh, forgiveness, operate on permission, and I'm sure y'all will be. So I'm certainly not trying to reveal it something, I hope, you know, I'm, I'm trying to give you the whole story. So, so that's, that's where we are on that, and so Mr. Green is proceeding to try to, uh, to get that done, and, and really that's all the request I have.
What about the SRO grant?
I, I'm not one of that, he didn't bring it up today, but I tell you what, while we're talking about it, last week he had a deal that, um, he could apply for a grant for up to fifty thousand dollars per SRO office. If that's still available and you'd like for him to apply for, I, I would certainly think it'd be worthwhile to do.
Well, I just, it was in the memo that was sent to us, that's why, when I was looking at the items and, uh...
And it does have the word grant in there.
It's a two to one match, but, um, um, layer, uh... Ms. Raintry, Mrs. Raintry and I went to the LGC meeting on, um, Tuesday. And, um, it's very interesting, asked a lot of questions, and we did not get a unanimous vote. Someone voted against us on the, that, um, concerned about debt. Isn't that correct? So I've just warned you, which I'll know, they were concerned about the debt we were adding on. You said, mentioned that you had fund balance for number two about the trailers. Oh, hold on a minute, the SRO grant, is this for one year or what?
I think it was just one year.
So I, the first year that, that's a grant, then the county has to pick up the entire tab?
Listen, listen, I, I let him hear your name, did I?
Okay, I did the first year, the county would be, have to?
I, I don't have the details, I, I, I'm talking to you like a dead Jew, I can only assume that's the correct answer.
Well, I, one of the things I would want to know about that is, do we have to add a new SRO officer? Can we use those, I mean, because I, I've seen some of the, some of what you're talking about, uh, through the emails that we get. And I know that there's, there's a lot of money out there in the upcoming year for rural counties, uh, in, in the area of education. And I would, I would want to know, is it for adding a new SRO officer, or can't we use it in our current, you know, in our current budget for the current SRO officer? Because like I said, there's, there's some dollars out there to help, uh, rural boys and kids.
A lot of business to tend to?
Uh, you're the last.
Maybe I want to discuss the other two things, I go outside and try to find data from him, come back in, can you?
Is this, is this, uh, this part of the SRO, is that something he has to address tomorrow?
I, I don't think so, but I don't know.
Okay, and this, uh, on number one, it says, an opportunity to apply for, you know, one to two million dollars. Um, is it one or is it two, and it's a twenty percent match, well, a hundred, a million dollars, that's two hundred thousand dollars. If it's two million dollars, that's four hundred thousand dollars. And that's, um, uh, we just don't have that laying around, um, so I mean, we need to know.
And I would have a question, since you said it was the same details as before, we've already given up lottery money.
There is none.
We've already given up lottery money for five years. To get the two point five, and if it's coming from the same pot of money, then what does that mean?
All right, now, we, we, the, the board gave up about a hundred thousand. We gave up a hundred thousand a year to fund that.
No, sir, the lottery money was currently used to pay off the current school debt. To get the two point five million dollars, we had to give up lottery money for five years, which is about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars total.
Okay.
If this one to one, two point, one to two million dollars is coming from that same pot of money, we can't give up lottery money eight years?
That we don't have.
Because you already did.
Correct.
All right, but now, did we give up?
That was not lottery money, that was part of the Article forty-four tax, which is being used to pay for the construction and renovation of the school.
Ten million dollars.
All right, but we, we gave up?
That was Article forty-four, that had nothing to do with lottery money.
All right, but we gave up a hundred thousand dollars a year for five years in there, right?
Right, it was about a hundred to a hundred and ten, depending on lottery sales.
And the way I am, is which way I pay it, it comes from, uh, which five years, I, I can't keep up with which five years.
Yeah, that was money, that was money that would come to the county. The whole debt. So it didn't come out of the school fund, it came out of the county fund.
Right.
All right, and then I'm going to go and I'll say what I did.
Yeah, because I think we need more information.
And I, I would want to make a decision on it. Like, like I was saying, we get, we get matched, uh, two hundred thousand matched for every plus a hundred thousand, we lose again. How many days, no, for five years or ten years, where?
Yeah, but another, another question that I had, uh, about those dollars would be, they're probably specific to a project as well.
You said this is for, to an alternative school.
Yeah, that, one of, one of the things I was thinking about was, uh, in a, interrupt what the timeframe on the next school, the next school is.
Well, the, the lot, the bond issue did not make it through the general assembly. We're not voting on a school bond issue, I mean, the voters in November, it didn't make an eye. So that is not, you know, we all thought that we were going to have this bond referendum and then we were going to have all this money to help with school construction and all, and it did not make it through.
I'm making a go of this, but I think we've got, we've taken on quite a bit right now.
Yeah, I think we need to let this test.
Maybe we can look at it next, uh, fiscal year, but not at this point.
And then jump track two on the SRO, that may be a good program, because sometimes part of that grant, like you mentioned, is certainly for continuation, however, if you drop it, you still have the equipment that's at the schools.
I know they have put in buzzer systems in all the schools, I think, at this town, you know, where you can buzz in.
The gates will have it.
Gates with Cooper, Buckland, um, Central has it, and they said that we're going to put one in a high school. The problem with high school, we have so many entrances, and they only want to do the one in the front door, where the office is. But you know, there's too many doors.
That's also a different pot of money, from what I understand, that's going to be available.
We're certainly supplementing that, if he does have.
Well, the school has the, uh, the fund balance, that can take care of thirty-two thousand, and I wouldn't say it, everyone. So I, I don't think we need to consider that at all. Because, um, we've taken care of, we advanced them, uh...
Would you like to make that for in the motion?
Was he asking us for that, or?
No.
And said, if we did not prove it, he could get it from fund balance?
His initial request on this paper was for the school, was for the commissioners to pay that amount.
Because remember, we advanced them a million.
But they've not, excuse me, no, they, they've not spent a million. And you could count this thirty-two towards that million if you so desire.
But I'm thinking something else is going to come up, that's, with the school, you know, there's some problems going to come up during the construction, that no one is counting on, most time when you're building something, it doesn't go exactly as you claim. At least that's been my experience.
So now we make a motion on item two, uh, that we would, uh, defer that project to the school and take it out of the fund balance.
Sound motion?
I'll make a motion, well, for it.
What do you buy about it?
No. It, it didn't answer, so my, my, my suggestion would be to either, you, you, I, I say you do one thing to forget it, or if, if you want Ms. Hoplin to empower her to sign it, if it sounds right to her tomorrow. Or you can do that, or either just table it till we can get you some more information. But I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see you jumping on the bandwagon with the information we got, I understand where you're coming from.
I mean, I don't think we can make a decision, though.
No, I'd certainly make a motion that we defer that until a later date, if it's still available. If it's not available, then obviously build away, but, uh, if we can get more information, uh, or we can make a decision.
I'm saying, and it is not available, we'll make something out of it, as we look at it.
Right.
Okay, well, so we want to table this discussion. Or whatever, which one do you think is best?
Well, um, Mr. Freeman, uh, Mr. Felton, excuse me, has, has brought his information.
And we did that.
And we're not yet, so we're receiving the information and we don't have to think of voting necessarily, because we're, uh, I think we appreciate the information, but we don't have the full context to, to vote.
If, if I may, Commissioner Jordan had made a motion, though, to defer the constable trailers in the school, and then that's when he came back in, people asked him to wait, so...
On item two, uh, where we want to get, uh, trail of this mistake, uh, out of that motion that we, uh, deferred the cost of that to, to, uh, for education, to pull out their fund balance, that was in, uh, break it, that the county had poured out, out of.
Okay, a motion has been made, is our second.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, popular second, end of discussion. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes five to zero. And we'll wait and hear from y'all concerning the other two lines. Thank you, um, is the demolition going to start anytime soon? I was hoping that could be done before students got there.
You know, we've had so many bumps in the road, I'm not going to sit here and tell you when it's going to start. Soon as we can, I'm, I'm sure it will start, but I, I noticed something's got to jump up, it just wouldn't be later than this.
That is true, absolutely, well, but thank you for coming.
Appreciate all the hard work that you, your board, and Dr. Williams have been making, making happen.
There we go.
Okay, I believe that's all the new business. Uh, citizens' comments? Commissioners' comments, we'll start going with Commissioner Freeman.
Thank you, ma'am, uh, appreciate the interest that, uh, citizens certainly showing, the, uh, the notes and the comments that we get, and some that are, uh, are covered in some aspect, we're generally, uh, brought to, uh, to the light on who, uh, may be making those comments, and we're certainly glad to get them, uh, even though they are covered. Uh, the, uh, my fellow colleagues here have made some difficult decisions and continue to do so, and I appreciate their, uh, their involvement and certainly how they're engaged, so thank you.
Now, too, thank everybody for showing interest tonight and coming out, and Ray, I, I really appreciate all the hard work you have done on pursuing this and the, nothing is easy when you have to pursue so much paperwork, even get started on something real. And I, I, I commend you for all the work that you put in on it.
Well, I've enjoyed it, if it, if it was easy, it wouldn't have been fun, I've had a good time.
But you all familiar with Mr. Murphy?
Yeah.
I think it's right to say it a long time.
I thank everyone for coming, thank our citizens for being interested in the decisions made for the county, and we hope that we made the best decisions, that's what we try to do, and, uh, have a good evening.
Well, thank everyone for coming, and, uh, I see Valerie was able to stay with us for a little while. Valerie, you, uh, we wish you well in, uh, in what's coming up for you, and you will be in our thoughts and prayers. And, uh, thank you for all that you do, uh, for Gates, Gates County Partner for Health program, you do a wonderful job. And again, thank you everyone for being here tonight.
I'm totally like, thank everyone for coming out tonight, uh, to listen to the business of the county. And I think we have two excellent examples of citizen involvement in the county, trying to make the county a better place. Valerie with the Gates Partners for Health, trying to make sure that, uh, numbers go up so we can stay running a little bit longer. And we certainly appreciate the efforts of your group, uh, to make us a healthier place and hope, and we hope that your, um, health concerns will be answered. And we thank Mr. Felton, while he has done good school, uh, certainly many a mile has been, uh, driven by him to make sure this process, uh, has gotten to the point he has. It has not, it has been a bumpy road, and I think it's been a learning experience for us. I think it was a learning experience for Ford of Education, uh, when we built an old school, I think, like, we all know a lot of the pitfalls.
The time we get where we can afford another school, we're going to be ancient history.
We'll probably be sitting feet on it. But anyway, but we do, and, you know, the citizens of the county make this a special choice. The people who are there working each and every day to make sure that the county, um, it can reach its potential for all its citizens. And that's what we want, to make, make it better for, for our children, for our elderly, uh, for everyone. Uh, thank y'all for coming once again, and we would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn till, uh...
Before you do, I forgot one thing on citizen comments.
Okay, we'll let you have it.
Taylor Mill Road has a will maker on it, and Mr. Felton, I imagine you've seen it at the corner of Daddy Lane, right there in front of Tommy David's house, there's a beech tree, it, it's... right there in front of Tommy Davis' house, there's a beech tree that, that is doing a little bit more over time. If we could get the state to take that down before it comes down on somebody's car, it would sure be nice, because I, I mean, all the neighbors are talking about it, and I know they've contacted people that hit the highway department, and, and the tree is still hanging around, and we get a rain that's failing, a little wind, that thing's going to come down, and Memphis Law says it's going to come down on someone.
So it's down in lane and where?
Down on Daddy Lane and Taylor Mill Road.
But you said it hasn't been reported?
Yes, ma'am.
Did they make any comments about that, Ray, when it was reported, did they make any comments, uh, Department of Transportation?
Ray, I'm a head young'un, you, you don't really think I'd remember it after two weeks, do you?
CRS does take effect, uh, what we've heard in the past about, uh, damaging trees and limbs is that uh, they leave that alone for the fact that it may, may, uh, cause other damage, so I don't know what.
Landowner issue?
Kind of landowner, and, and they don't want it to fall off somewhere.
Yeah, I.
That, that was the issue with one that was on the medical center there at the intersection of Black Creek, somewhere there was another one like that, and the state would not take it down.
I know there was one there right close to the high school, it was leaning on some wires, and they, nothing has been done.
No, that one's gone.
Oh, good.
Madam Chairman, if you're going to make contact with DOT, about that issue, there's a, a limb, a dead limb in the, and on thirty-two in front of, in front of the country, uh, that's just hanging, it was waiting to drop on someone's windshield. Uh, it's probably about six, three, three to four inches wide, uh, it's a good size limb, if not larger, and it's hanging probably, uh, I'd say seven, eight feet, just waiting to drop.
On the side of, kind of court beach, so.
It's hanging out of a tree, it's dead, it's gross.
It's a dead limb, in that shape.
You know, I, I don't know what they were. I don't know what they were saying about that, I, I don't think they were going to. I don't, I don't like that, but I think it's probably not going to work, but in law courts, say that we've had citizen complaints.
Sure, they're, they're hesitant, they should be taking it.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn till August, first Wednesday in August, which I have no idea when it is.
Move second.
Motion's been made in pocket scut, uh, second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all.
All right.